Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the April 13th, 2015 Dover City Council meeting. We have first on the agenda tonight the invocation led by Reverend Theodore Henderson, followed by the pledge to our nation's flag led by Councilman Slavin.
For this beautiful spring day, we're thankful, dear God, for the renewal of the earth. We're thankful. We're thankful for the upcoming elections, and we pray that the Dover citizens will exercise their God-given right to vote, because we know, dear God, that there was folks who didn't have that right and suffered. And just because, well, they weren't in the in-group, they were not allowed to vote. Now, we all have that right, so we pray that we'll vote clearly. We pray likewise that you be with those who are working with those many who are homeless, dear God. Homelessness is a terrible specter. As we get richer, dear God, it seems like there's folks who are left on the outside. As our economy recovers, dear God, we want to be cognizant of all of our citizens. All of our citizens are precious. Now gracious God, give us patience, and when we do our work in an imperfect world, grant us compassion, and we may serve you with dignity and enthusiasm to make our world better. Present our commitment, each of these councilmen's commitment, place our talents in our service to our neighbor and our country. As always, we ask these petitions to acknowledge your name as our God and our Father. Amen.
Amen.
I believe in the students to the life of the United States of America. I consider the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the rich and just for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. Council, you have before you this evening's agenda. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda tonight?
If not, Your Honor, I'll move for approval as presented.
Second.
By Mr. Hutchison, seconded by Mr. Dixon, approve the agenda this evening. Any questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. I'll have before you the consent agenda. Those items on the council agenda that are considered routine and non-controversial are marked with an asterisk. They'll be acted upon by a single roll call vote of council. There'll be no separate discussion of the items unless a member of council sought a request, and in which event the matter shall be removed from the council agenda, consent agenda rather, and considered as a separate item. Pleasure, Council.
Move the approval on consent agenda as presented.
By Mr. Slavin.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Dixon. Any questions on the motion? Seeing none, I'll have a court call the roll.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Persa?
Yes.
Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Mr. Hutchison?
Yes.
Mr. Bonner?
Yes, motion carries unanimously. Item number two on the agenda this evening is a presentation from the American Institute of Architecture Delaware 2014 Honor Award. I would invite Mayor Christensen, Mr. Greg Moore of Becker Morgan, and Margie Seer of the Dover Public Library to the podium for the presentation.
Good evening. On behalf of the library, this is actually the honor award, which is the top award given by the AIA, which is the American Institute of Architects for the design of the library. It was the top award last year in 2014, and it was also a special recognition for the sustainable design that was worked into the library. So Dover should be very proud in winning this award. It is a statewide award. Actually, Holzman Moschino and the entire team, EDIS, Becker Morgan, and the city of Dover can be very proud. With that, I'll give this to the mayor.
Well, thank you very much. And Margie, I'd like to present this to you to have for your safekeeping in the library, where it should rightly be displayed. And you may keep it there for six months. I will keep it in my office for six months, and then we'll rotate it around on a as new basis. You did an outstanding job. It is a building that we can all be proud of. And Margie, since you work there every day, you should say something.
All right. I'd like to acknowledge the team that went into the building and the planning of this library, because it was a wonderful team to work with, and everyone had the best interests of all of the community at heart in the planning and design of this building. So I really have to give a lot of credit to Becker Morgan, to EDIS, and to Holzman Moschino and the city team that was involved in planning and the building of this project. So we thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, if I may, Greg and Margie, without your participation in the city of Dover activities and in the Dover library, and Greg, you in particular with the partnership and your business affiliations, thank you for what you both do for the city. You've made it far better place.
Thank you.
Item number three on the agenda is presentation of certificates. A certificate of appreciation for Code Purple. I would invite Commissioner Allen Angel of the Kent County Levy Court, Diane Kaskewski, Becky Martin, Jack McLaughlin, and Justin Melendez to join Mayor Christensen at the podium. There are also representatives here from Calvary Baptist Church. This will be the first one. There are several. Thus the full house. Madam Clerk, would you read the certificate into the record?
Certificate of appreciation presented to Allen Angel, Diane Kaskewski, Rebecca Martin, Jack McLaughlin, and Justin Melendez. On behalf of the city of Dover and the individuals who you served, we thank you for your dedication and commitment to the greater Dover community, as demonstrated by your leadership in the Code Purple program during the winter of 2014-2015.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. President?
Mr. Mayor.
At the bottom of each of these certificates is something that I think really strikes home. It's from Matthew 25, verses 34 to 40. "For I was hungry, and you gave me food; I was thirsty, and you gave me drink; I was a stranger, and you welcomed me." Nothing more exemplifies the Code Purple actions that took place this winter. Two weeks before it started getting cold, someone said, "My gosh, I don't think we're going to have much of a winter this year." And boy, did it prove me wrong. Having said that and taking full responsibility for the cold winter, I am very honored to present these certificates of appreciation to the workhorses that represent all of you out there for your efforts throughout the winter. Becky, there you go.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
You're welcome. Diane? Jack McLaughlin? I can't resist telling the story about Commissioner Angel, but I will, because I promised him I wouldn't talk about him sleeping in a dumpster. And last but not least, Justino Melendez. Thank you very much, folks. And, Mr. President, can we offer, we'll let Becky and Allen find out who wants to talk before we present the other certificates.
Absolutely.
Well, I would just like to say thank you to the community of Dover and Kent County, because without our community and the support and love that we have gotten from everyone, Code Purple would not have been possible. We have been fortunate enough, and I'm sorry, but our first year, we probably only brought in 30 to 35 people, where this year, we brought in anywhere from 75 to 80 people a night within our area, at least. And our volunteers and our people that you see here, our sanctuaries that are all here, God bless every one of them for opening their doors, leaving their families behind to make a difference in the lives of those that were out in the cold, hungry, and didn't have a place to go. So we're very fortunate. I believe in Dover. I'm proud to be a member of Dover, Delaware, and this next year is going to be even better, because we're working. We don't only just work, and I have to say this, I'm the little pit bull here. We don't just work to bring people in from the cold and give them a bed, do we? No, we don't do that, do we, Bishop? No. We bring them in, we show them love, we show them support, right, Reverend Lee? And we try our best to put them back out into the community and show them and give them a home and a place in the community, right, Ms. Verna? That's right. So that's what, that's our goal. Our goal is to make a difference. There should be no one in our town, in our county, that has to want for food, want for warmth, or want for any need. We're all here. It could be our mother, our brother, our sister, our friend, whoever. And I love these people. Everyone that's come in is my family. I have two men here in front of me, Jack and Justino, who are members or were members of Dover Interfaith. Justino has his own place now. Yay! And Jack has his own place, really, yay! But without them, we wouldn't have had what we had at Code Purple. So it's been a combination of love and support for everyone, and I thank you all. I thank you all.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yes, sir.
As most of you know, I live up on State Street, and it's not a renowned area for homelessness, but you haven't lived until you have a homeless woman knock on your door at 5:00 on a Saturday afternoon. And before this organization got founded, it was pretty difficult to find someplace for people. And I know my wife and I spent several hours trying to find a place for this woman to go. She's not a success story yet, but at least we felt better about getting her in off the street and getting her sheltered. What you all have done with Code Purple is remarkable in conjunction with the Interfaith Mission and the other women's shelters that are around the area. We can't thank you enough, and we wish you all the success in the world for the years coming. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Exit stage right. You may stay.
Madam Clerk?
We would invite representatives of the Calvary Baptist Church, Centennial United Methodist Church, the Christ Church of Dover, the Dover Interfaith Mission for Housing, the Dover Presbyterian Church, the Milford Community Center, Mount Carmel Church of the Living God, Wesley United Methodist Church, the Wyoming United Methodist Church, to join Mayor Christensen at the podium. I would request the city clerk to read this, if I could, into the record.
Certificate of appreciation. On behalf of the city of Dover and the individuals who you've served, we thank you for your dedication and commitment to the greater Dover community, as demonstrated by your participation in the Code Purple program during the winter of 2014-2015.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. President?
Mr. Mayor.
Proceed. Ladies and gentlemen, some of you have your facilities and are not in the city of Dover, but you who are outside the city of Dover stepped forward just as quickly as the facilities in Dover, and you took in our overflow, and we greatly appreciate that. So I would ask that you would turn and ask your individual volunteers that are here tonight who served in the sanctuaries to stand up so they can be recognized. Please don't be shy.
Everyone from these organizations who serves as a volunteer, stand up. We would like to recognize you.
Thank you. I'd like the representative from Calvary Baptist Church to step forward, please. Thank you very much. Centennial United Methodist Church. Christ Church of Dover. Dover Interfaith Mission. Is there anyone here? They're the granddaddy of all taking care of people. Dover Presbyterian Church. Thank you, sir. Milford Community Center. Thank you very much. Mount Carmel Church of the Living God. Thank you.
You can say who's in charge.
Yes. Wesley United Methodist Church.
Hello there.
And last but not least, Wyoming United Methodist Church. Thank you very much. Once again, these certificates are a small token of our appreciation for a job well done. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, before everyone disperses, I would like to have you all gather in front of the podium facing out toward the audience so that we can get a photograph.
All right, if you all would like to stand up against the dials there. And individual winners, would you also like to come down? Don't be shy, please.
You can come out on the floor to take your photographs if you want to.
While we're gathering, while everyone is gathering, there, Herb and Janine, you know, you know how I feel about what you guys do. Herb and I have been friends for many years. Janine and I have been friends for many years. Herb and I go back to when Herb had dark hair and I had hair. The rest of the churches, without your assistance, this would not have been possible, and, you know, we can't thank you enough. It's a worthwhile activity. Thank you so much. While we're on a roll, I'd like to invite Mayor Christensen back to the podium, and I'll go down and join him. This is being for a recognition of the Dover Police Department for their certification.
Mr. President, if it would be permissible, can we have Councilman Hutchison join us?
Absolutely.
As well as Chief Burnett?
Chief Burnett, would you join us? Madam Clerk, would you read the certificate into the record for the recognition of certification?
Certificate of recognition presented to Dover Police Department in recognition of being accredited for the sixth consecutive time by the Commission on Accreditation for Law Enforcement, CLEIA, which is the gold standard for public safety. Congratulations and thanks are extended to all members of the Dover Police Department for your continued dedication and for receiving this prestigious honor and continue to make us and the community proud.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, Mr. President. Chief Burnett, on behalf of the mayor and council of the city of Dover, we are pleased to present to you this certificate of recognition that says we have a gold standard police department that's manned by police officers who operate well within the parameters of acceptable police work, and we are greatly appreciative of your service, and please pass on to the men and women of the Dover Police Department our sincere appreciation for the men and women who protect and serve our community. Mr. President?
Thank you, Mayor Christensen. Paul, I don't think that we can ever express enough to you and the members of your police department how appreciative we are of you gaining national certification. It's a big deal, as our friend Joe Biden would say, without the expletives. And people, we take it for granted, and when we call the police department, they respond. We have one of the quickest response rates in the city, I mean, I'm sorry, in the country. We have one of the greatest solvability rates anywhere in the country. About 80% of our crimes end up getting solved, and that's awfully, awfully good. It is the largest expense that we have in the city, and it's for a good cause, because it keeps you safe in your beds at night. We have problems. Those solutions are only going to come with your assistance and the people that are out in the street, letting the police know what they see and what they hear. These men and women do a wonderful job, and, you know, having been a cop, I can't ever express my appreciation enough to these guys, these men and women.
Well, it's certainly an honor for me, as a former police chief and a former mayor of the city of Dover, to join both the mayor of the city of Dover, Robin Christensen and Dave Bonner, our council president, members of council, and most important, you, the citizens of Dover, in congratulating the men and women of the Dover Police Department. National accreditation, in my opinion, is one of the most important things the department can do. It sets us totally apart from everybody else. And I can, to you and certainly to those who work so hard to make it happen, my congratulations to all of you. Job well done. Thank you.
We have one more item for the police department, and Paul, after we're done with this, next item, then you can talk. You know, we just want to hand you paper, then. You're a man of few words. A lot of us may not realize it, but the Dover Police Department is 90 years old, and that goes back, I don't remember who the first chief was, I think Chief Farr was one of the first ones in the city, and, I mean, that's when they had, I think Robin told me, they had three officers, one car, and a part, and two part-time policemen, and Hutch was one of them. But, Paul, we'd like to congratulate you on your 90th anniversary. Madam Clerk?
Certificate of congratulations presented to the Dover Police Department in celebration of 90 years of commitment and dedication to protecting and serving the Dover community. The city of Dover extends its congratulations on attaining this special milestone.
Mr. Mayor.
Once again, I'm very proud to present this certificate of recognition, and the Dover Police Department, in celebrating its 90th anniversary, have a lot of events that will be coming up that are going to involve the community. So Chief, on behalf of the mayor and council and the citizens whom we serve, happiest 90th birthday. And would you ask Hutch what kind of car that was?
It was a horse. I have a couple of officers that are here. Lieutenant Spicer, Sergeant Todd Case, Sergeant Hermans. You guys want to come down? Do you recognize? Master Corporal Stradwick and PFC James Wood. We're here.
Chief Mark yours.
I would just like to say that it's a true honor to accept both of these awards, the CLEIA and the 90th anniversary. The CLEIA, you know, we couldn't have done it without the men and women, both civilian and sworn, both past and present. They've worked very hard over the past 15, 18 years to maintain this. They also got the Meritorious Award, which is the sixth consecutive reaccreditation. Very proud of them. They work very hard every day, and it doesn't go unnoticed. And I'm very proud to be the 13th chief in the 90th year of the Dover Police Department, and I can assure you, we'll win our streets back. We're getting shootings every day. We're going to put a stop to it. Believe me, we're going to do it. The community needs to stick together, and we can't be afraid, and it's not snitching. It's helping empower your community. You need to let us know what's going on. If you cooperate with us, when you see something, let us know. We'll put a stop to it, and you gain your community back. Do not put up with the bullyism, because we will not put up with it. And we'll find out who these shooters are, and we'll put them where they belong. So we can't do it without you. Dover's only as good as the people that live in Dover. Our police department is only good as the people we serve, and we serve you, believe me when I say that. So I thank you.
Item number four on the agenda is a proclamation for Arbor Day. Madam Clerk?
Whereas trees are of vital importance in beautifying our communities, regulating temperatures, producing life-giving oxygen, providing a habitat and food source for wildlife, reducing erosion, and serving as a source of building materials and countless wood products. And whereas, in 1872, Jay Sterling Morton, a Nebraska pioneer, proposed that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees by individuals and civic organizations, resulting in the first celebration of Arbor Day on April 10th, 1872, with an estimated 1 million trees being planted in Nebraska that day. And whereas, in 1885, Arbor Day was named a legal holiday and has since become a national event promoted by the National Arbor Day Foundation, whose mission is to inspire people to plant, nurture, and celebrate trees. And whereas, the city of Dover was named a Tree City USA in 2014 for the 25th consecutive year by the National Arbor Day Foundation in recognition of the city's outstanding urban forestry program. And whereas, the city of Dover Planting and Inspections Department's tree planting and preservation ordinance has caused the planting of thousands of trees in all subdivisions and commercial sites since 1992, and the city has continued to aggressively plant street trees between curbs and sidewalks in almost every available site in the city. And whereas, the Delaware state champion American elm on the green may be the only living witness to Delaware's ratification of the United States Constitution that took place at the Golden Fleece Tavern in 1787, underscoring that planting and caring for trees is a special gift that one generation passes down to the next. Now therefore, I, Robin R. Christensen, mayor of the city of Dover, Delaware, do hereby proclaim April 24th, 2015, as Arbor Day in the city of Dover, and urge all citizens to support efforts to care for trees along our streets and our parks and in our yards. As the city of Dover plants trees on public property, I urge all citizens to plant trees on their properties to enhance the environment and promote the well-being of present and future generations.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mayor Christensen?
Yes, sir.
Next is the, first we have to vote on this proclamation. Next on the agenda is item 4B, which is Autism Awareness Month. I would invite either Terry Avery, the executive director, or Brian Hall, the associate director of Autism Delaware, to join Mayor Christensen at the podium. Clark, read the proclamation into the record.
Whereas autism, the fastest-growing developmental disability in the United States affecting more than 3 million people, is an urgent public health crisis that demands a national response. According to Autism Delaware, in 1995, the prevalence of autism was one in every 2,500 births. Today, it is one in 68. And whereas autism is a result of a neurological disorder that affects the normal functioning of the human brain, it can affect anyone regardless of race, ethnicity, gender, or socioeconomic background. Symptoms and characteristics of autism may present themselves in a variety of combinations and can result in significant lifelong impairment of an individual's ability to learn, develop healthy, interactive behaviors, and understand verbal as well as nonverbal communication. And whereas the effort to address autism continues, doctors, therapists, and educators can help persons with autism overcome or adjust to its challenges and provide early, accurate diagnosis and the resulting appropriate education, intervention, and therapy that are vital to future growth and development. And whereas ensuring that persons living with autism have access to the lifelong care and services needed to pursue the full measure of personal happiness and achieve their greatest potential. Now, therefore, I, Robin R. Christensen, mayor of the city of Dover, Delaware, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2015 as Autism Awareness Month in the city of Dover, and encourage all citizens to raise public awareness of autism and the myriad of issues surrounding autism, as well as to increase knowledge of the programs that have been and are being developed to support individuals with autism and their future.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of the city of Dover, the mayor and council, and the citizens of the city that we all serve, we are pleased to present you with this proclamation, and for you allowing us to let our citizenry, as well as the citizens of central Delaware, be aware of the situation and the great works that you do. So, Alex, would you, you volunteered to give a few words here.
I did, okay. Thank you, Mayor Christensen and members of the council. I'm Alex Eldredth. I'm the Public Policy Director for Autism Delaware, and this is a great honor, and thank you so much for recognizing Autism Awareness Month. It's a very important month for us and for all Delawarians who are living with an autism-spectrum disorder. I'd like to introduce who's joining me today. This is Lisa Crouch and Joe Bolinsky. They both work with our vocational program, which is called our POWER Program, which is a nationally-recognized, community-based vocational program where we assist adults with autism to find gainful employment and become productive members of society and have fulfilling lives, and they work very hard every day with each of those participants to make sure that, you know, they're happy and that the employers are happy. And again, autism is, the prevalence has increased. The three noes we say about autism is we, there is no known cause, there is no test to take to show it yet, and there's no cure. So, just recognizing that, again, April is a very important month for us, but all year long, you know, we have a lot of work to do. Thank you again to the mayor and the city council for recognizing us, and please support Autism and Autism Delaware in any way that you can. Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is a proclamation for National Service Recognition Day. I would invite the following AmeriCorps members and senior corps volunteers to join the mayor at the podium. From the Delaware Economic Development Office volunteers, Sally Wochensian, Norma Johnson, Leon Bui, Anna Priscilla Estrada, Matthew Scott, Leilana DeChana Shepherd, Diane Zaco, Eric Crowell, and Tori Parker. From the Senior Companion Program volunteers, Senior Companions Fay White, Mike Adams, Linda Abbott, Celestine Holly, Barbara Shoemaker, and staff members Chantel Holly, volunteer coordinator Valerie Wright, the Senior Companion Program manager. And from the Delaware Foster Grandparent Program, Senior Companion Program volunteers, Mildred Johnson, Linda Lewis, Alan Russell, Cheryl Martin, Joanne Duffhill, Sandra Bowden Avant, Gail Tolbert, Jane Schneider, Audrey Joseph, Maxine Reed, and Nancy Meldy, and staff members Daniel Young and Robin Fisher Cornish. I guess that's everyone in the audience.
You can stand in front of me. They don't mind if they block my view. Don't worry.
Might as well just ask everyone to come down and get a picture.
Is there anyone who's down to volunteer? Ladies, could you excuse the chief so he can get a fire going, save us some tax dollars?
Madam Clark, would you read the proclamation into the record?
Whereas the nation's mayors are increasingly turning to national service and volunteerism as a cost-effective strategy to meet city needs. And whereas AmeriCorps and senior corps address the most pressing challenges facing our cities and nation, from educating students for the jobs of the 21st century and supporting veterans and military families, to preserving the environment and helping communities recover from natural disasters. And whereas national service expands economic opportunity by creating more sustainable, resilient communities and providing education, career skills, and leadership abilities for those who serve. And whereas national public, national service participants increase the impact of the organizations they serve with both through their direct service and by recruiting and managing millions of additional volunteers. And whereas AmeriCorps members and senior corps volunteers demonstrate commitment, dedication, and patriotism by making an intensive commitment to service, a commitment that remains with them in their future endeavors. Now, therefore, I, Robin R. Christensen, mayor of the city of Dover, Delaware, do hereby proclaim April 7, 2015, as National Service Recognition Day in the city of Dover, and encourage residents to recognize the positive impact of national service in our city, to thank those who serve and to find ways to give back to their communities.
Thank you, Madam Clark. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ladies and gentlemen, there are so many of you here who are volunteers. It's really heartwarming to know that between the Code Purple people that were here and the volunteers that are here being recognized now, fill this entire chamber up. Just think, if that were three times over, the people that are sitting home tonight would step forward and put forth the hours that you do, what a great place this would be to live. It already is, but it could be so much better. So, from the bottom of my heart, I want to express my deep and sincere appreciation to all of you, and on behalf of the mayor and council and the citizens of the city of Dover that we serve, and obviously that you serve as well. Now, here's my dilemma. I have one certificate, and there's 711 of you up here. So, I will tell you what, if you would do me a favor, swing around and stand in front, is that permissible, Mr. President?
Absolutely.
To get our picture taken, and once you get in position, I will bring this certificate to someone who's in the middle. But I have to ask you to expedite, because we only have the room till 11:00, so let's go.
I might ask you to stand at the podium.
Come get your picture taken.
Mr. Mayor, I might ask you to stand at the podium and throw it over your shoulder like a bouquet.
No, don't be shy. Please go up. If you don't go up, you're holding up the operation handle. Go get your picture taken. Go get your picture taken, thank you. And you have your official photographer with you. So, let's all squeeze together. Yes, squeeze together. Please come get your picture taken.
Sure.
It's not a picture without you. I'm doing this very impartially.
I guess you're the only one taking a picture. We'll get the video.
All right. All right, thank you very much, Christian. You can play it over next to it.
Thank you all very much for what you do for our community. Now, everybody is going to either back up to gain their seats or exit the chamber. Without volunteers, I would remind all of you that this community would be nearly not as good as it is. Thank you so much. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Robin Fisher. I'm the program manager of the Foster Grandparent Program, and I think it would be befitting for us to recognize, excuse me, as we discuss national service, Ms. Ann Russell, who is a volunteer who has served with the Foster Grandparent for over 30 years and is 90 years old. She serves 25 hours a week for the, for 12 months. She also has another job, can you imagine that? But we are so honored to have someone who is so dedicated at that age and to give back to the community. We greatly appreciate her.
Thank you very much. All right. Item, next item on the agenda this evening is a presentation, the 2014 Annual Report of the Downtown Dover Partnership. I would invite Greg Moore of the Downtown Dover Partnership to the podium for the presentation.
Good evening, Mr. President.
Good evening. I have Mr. Bill Neaton here with me as well. We'll keep this short. Very, very difficult to follow the last two acts, but we do have a lot of folks on our board and our committees that are giving of their time to downtown. First of all, Mr. Neaton's actually provided you a copy of our yearly summary, which is here. I'm not going to go through all of that by point, but just give you a couple of highlights. Highlight number one, new businesses are opening in downtown. That's a, that's a big deal. In total, 18 new businesses last year, the largest of which was the EZ Pass Building, serving about 85 new employees in the downtown, and walk-in visitors from folks using the EZ Pass program are over 1,000 every single month, and those people are coming downtown and using our downtown businesses and seeing downtown Dover and making a difference in the downtown. So, we're very proud of that. We spent over $1 million in renovating that building. That building was basically unused. It was leaking. It was 20,000 square feet of space. We brought it to code, brought it back to life, and now have people in it. We're very proud of that. That's the kind of success story that we want to see bred in the downtown. Another big highlight of last year is new merchant interests. We have a new merchant committee. They are active. They're working hard, and their first big event was the Oktoberfest, which was a very big success, and they're going to build upon that next year and do a great job again. And then upcoming in May 2, the Heritage History and Hops event that they're going to do, that's going to look somewhat like the Oktoberfest, but it's going to be a big festival of downtown, and they're doing a great job, and we love their energy. But I guess down to business grants. The partnership has been effective in trying to get grants for the downtown, and this year, with city manager's help, we have been granted transportation enhancement funds, up to $1 million, for the continuation of improvements on North Street, and that project is now under design through DelDOT. They are paying for that design, and the partnership and the city of Dover are working together to make sure that that money comes to the downtown. A big event this year, the Wells Fargo Grant for $75,000, which was a planning grant for restoring central Dover. That was pretty much trying to organize how to plan for improvements to the downtown, and that, that plan was actually key to a couple of the other things I'm going to talk about. But right as we speak, there's an implementation grant of under $1 million that's available to downtown Dover, and we're very hopeful that, that we get that as well. And then last, and kind of the biggest grant of this year, is the Downtown Development District Award that the state of Delaware gave to the city of Dover, and the Downtown Dover Partnership, along with the city of Dover, was instrumental in, in pushing for that through, through the state. That money is now available to our downtown businesses. There's lots of new interests, lots of new action in downtown, and we're going to see some nice projects that come from that, and we're very proud of that. We work closely with city manager and the city planner for that effort, and the governor, the state government actually reached out to us first and said, what is it that we, the state government, can do for you that will help your downtowns thrive? And we said, we need incentives for our businesses, and we need incentives for our residences so that we make improvements in these areas, and they saw that. We applied. Anne Marie did an outstanding job. We got that grant, and that money's now going to be helping our downtown look, look a lot better. So, those are kind of the highlights. Bill Neaton's with me. He put the written component together, and if there's any questions, I'll be glad to answer for you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Any questions from members of council or comments? Mr. Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Want to say I'd like to congratulate the partnership and the city and others, and particularly the business community, is that not only have there been quite a few businesses opening, but there haven't been a lot closing. We are actually gaining now, and that's a tremendous improvement, as well as all the efforts everyone's done to make this a better city in an inclusive way. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. And Mr. Hutchison.
Well, I'd like to echo the saying that I cannot begin to say thanks enough for the leadership and focus for downtown, and I'd like to think that it's been a long time coming, but now the results are starting to pay off. And quite frankly, on a personal note, with the commitment now we're getting from the governor's office, Kent County Levy Court, and the city of Dover and the partnership to continue to work and focus on downtown, we really are setting on a wonderful opportunity. So, I thank you, your leadership team of the economic development side of it, because quite frankly, I think the time is now for us to move forward, and I can't thank you enough for what you've done.
Thank you, councilman. Any other members of council have comments? I'll close this presentation by echoing what Mr. Anderson and Mr. Hutchison said. This team has worked very well together for the last five or six years, and this has really come to fruition. What you, as members of the Downtown Dover Partnership, what Bill's office and economic development has done in five years is pretty remarkable. EZ Pass was a chore. It got done. The library was a chore. It got done. The new apartment complex at the corner of Governor's and Lockman was a chore, but it got done. We have new businesses opening every day, and it's thanks to the business community and the economic development drivers of this community, and the cooperation we get from Wesley College, from, they help, from the legislature, from Levy Court that makes all of this possible. This has been a heck of a team over the last five years. I can count on two hands a lot of money that has been given to the downtown area, and it's well deserved. And I've said for many years, I'm sick of it going to Riverfront Development Corporation and the city of Wilmington. By God, we're finally getting some of our share. It's all because of you guys. Thank you.
Well, I'll close with thanking council. You've supported us over the years. We've worked great together, and we're proud to be here and, and give you a thank you to all what you've done for us.
Thank you, Greg. Item number six on the agenda tonight is a public hearing and final reading. Item number six on the agenda tonight is a public hearing and final reading proposed ordinance 2015-01 with planning commission amendment number one, PC number one. The first reading of the proposed ordinance was accomplished during the council meeting on February 9, 2015. The public hearing was rescheduled during the council meeting on February 23. Copies of the proposed ordinance are available at the entrance to council chambers. Since this amends the comprehensive plan, a public hearing is required. First, I will entertain a motion to consider the final reading of the proposed ordinance by title only, which is simply to allow the waiving of the reading. A separate motion is going to be necessary for its adoption.
To move.
Motion by Mr. Slavin, second by Mr. Hutchison. Any questions on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Ordinance 2015-01 with planning commission amendment number one, PC one, amending the comprehensive, 2008 comprehensive plan is amended by replacing table 12-1, land development plan, and amending chapter 13, growth and annexation plan. Mrs. Townsend.
Thank you. This is two amendments to the comprehensive plan that are addressed by this ordinance. And in your planning commission recommendation, they have stricken one of the proposed amendments. So, I'll go through each of them. Again, because this is an amendment to the comprehensive plan, it is subject to public hearing. If the council action does not support the planning commission action, then you would need to state your reasons for the record, because currently the planning commission is on record not in favor of one of the changes. So, these changes are listed in the report as A and B. So, I'll start with A. This is an amendment to the MAP 12-1 land development plan, and it was applicant-initiated. It is a request for a change in land use classification from residential medium density to commercial for property located at 801 North State Street, which is between Silver Lake and Lepore Road. The second amendment is an amendment to chapter 13, the growth and annexation plan. In this case, staff was bringing this forward because we have language in the comprehensive plan that requires that we run a cost-revenue analysis model for all category two annexation requests. In the last several years, that model has become extremely out of date. We were not seeing any annexation requests, and it was not being regularly updated. The amount of time and expense that goes into updating it does not support the result that we get. And the example I use of where we did use this in terms of looking at an annexation was when we annexed the Carey Farm on Route 8 and ran the model as 300 homes to be built. And that property is now the Dover High School, which is tax exempt, and the utility usage is far different than what we would have anticipated. So, what we have proposed in the draft that you have in front of you is to continue to analyze the costs and revenues, but not to use the complex model, to just simply look at what we would expect in terms of revenue under various development scenarios, and then ultimately make a recommendation based on the best information we have. The planning commission held a public hearing on the proposed comprehensive plan amendments on March 16, 2015. Following the public hearing, there were two motions, one on part A and one on part B. On part A, the motion was to deny the amendment to MAP 12-1 land development plan. And the maker of the motion, Mr. Krieger, said for reasons that he stated earlier, and those reasons are in the minutes, and that there's no compelling reason to amend this residential zone to commercial at this time. That motion was carried six to one with two members absent. Also, following the public hearing, there was a motion to recommend approval of the change to the comprehensive plan, growth and annexation chapter. And they specifically asked that the planning staff add language to that chapter to make sure that we acknowledge that we will still do a less complex cost and revenue analysis for annexation proposals, and that language has been added. Again, that motion passed seven to zero with two members of the commission absent. So, with that, I would take any questions.
Any questions on Mrs. Townsend?
Just for clarification, is all of that description applied to six A and only six A? Or how are we reading six A and seven together?
Okay, so, for seven, let me just look at the agenda to make sure. Okay, so, seven is the rezoning request. So, the way these things work is the application is made for a rezoning and comprehensive plan amendment, and they're scheduled together. But the zoning map cannot be amended unless the comprehensive plan is amended.
So, if six A fails, six B, we don't have to worry, or seven is moot?
Then I think it would still be a matter of due process that the applicant could have the hearing. But that would be at a separate night, because at this point, you don't have a recommendation from the planning commission. Following the hearing on March 16, where the planning commission recommended in opposition to the comprehensive plan amendment as it relates to that piece of land, the applicant requested that the rezoning application be deferred until council has made a decision on the plan amendment.
So, if council agrees with six A or agrees to amend the plan, we can proceed with seven?
You need to wait until you have a recommendation from the planning commission. So, if council approves the plan amendment as requested, not as forwarded by the planning commission, then the planning commission would hear the rezoning at their May meeting, and then the public hearing and final reading would be scheduled in June.
Okay. Are we doing anything on seven, then, that's going back to the planning commission? Or am I misunderstanding?
Well, if six passes in total, then when we get to number seven, I would recommend that you set a hearing for the planning commission in May and council in June. But if not, then we would give the applicant an opportunity to withdraw, or you would set a hearing where the law tells you you can't approve it.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions from members of council? Mr. Hutchison.
My question is, when this matter was taken before the planning commission, did staff make a recommendation one way or the other?
Yes. In this case, the staff recommendation was in favor of the proposed land use change. And if you can go to page 110 of the packet, you can see the current designation is on the left side of the screen. So, if you're coming up State Street, you can see that the adjacent properties on State Street are all commercial. And the adjacent properties to the north are zoned C2A, which is the zoning classification that the applicant has requested. So, the staff's recommendation was based on that State Street corridor. And when the planning commission looked at it, and then there was also some testimony from one of the residential neighbors, there was discussion more, instead of looking at the, from the State Street corridor, it was more the approach from Silver Lake. So, changing, you know, if you look from Silver Lake, you have contiguous residential there on that side of State Street. So, they had a different perspective. The other thing that was brought up by the planning commission was that statement was made that there is already a lot of underutilized commercial property in the city or vacant commercial property in the city. And they specifically referenced the efforts to revitalize the downtown. And the comment was made that this property is 1.3 miles from the center of the city's downtown development district, and that there's no, and based on that, they had said there was no compelling reason to change this to a commercial property when essentially there's enough inventory, was their discussion, and that this would create competition with an area we're trying to revitalize.
Okay, so, the justification for them to deny the application, what was the justification? Because they didn't think it was conducive to the neighborhood?
Well, they didn't think, they thought that because it's adjacent to the residential, that it should be looked at to be developed as residential, but also that adding more commercial land would just further compete with the, in particular, the downtown area that we're trying to revitalize. I've paraphrased a lot of what they've said, but the minutes are in the packet as well.
Any other questions from members of council? Seeing none, this does require a public hearing. I declare the public hearing open. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of the proposed ordinance? If so, come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the city council, and staff. For the record, my name is John Partee. I'm an attorney with the law firm Baird, Medallis, and Brockstedt, 6 South State Street, Dover, Delaware 19901. And we represent the applicant for part A of the ordinance before you, known as 801 Gold Coast LLC. The principal of that company is Mr. LD Schenk. So, my comments will be addressed solely to part A of the ordinance, although I'm not opposed to part B. First, I want to touch on the point that Mr. Hutchison raised, because I think it's critical. And that is that your professional planning staff looked at the situation and recommended approval, concluding, and I quote, "that the application is consistent with the development of the area and the goals of the comprehensive plan." The staff actually cited findings in chapter 12 of the city's comprehensive plan, noting that, one, Dover will continue to be the dominant commercial center within central Delmarva region; two, ease of access to commercial establishments is highly desirable within urban environments; three, jobs and commerce in the retail, wholesale, and service sectors are an important part of Dover's economic vitality; and four, well-designed, aesthetically pleasing commercial centers and corridors contribute to the city's overall image and the positive feeling of its resonance." That's directly from the staff report. So, the staff reviewed all of the uses existing in the neighborhood and concluded that most of the surrounding properties are principally commercial, and therefore, the application is in fact consistent with the character of the area. As was mentioned in the introduction tonight, the planning commission denied part A of the ordinance on the theory that the application would, and I quote, "create another commercial pocket," end quote, just 1.3 miles north of the downtown development district, which would compete with the downtown development district. I would respectfully submit that the planning commission got it wrong, both factually and legally. Factually, approval of part A of this ordinance would not create a pocket of commercial in this area. Commercial uses already exist. In fact, they dominate the area. If you look at the map, and you pan out from that map that was shown on the screen, this entire area is red, except for the residential development that's adjacent and this property. And in fact, as the chairman of the planning commission commented that night, that residential neighborhood is surrounded by commercial zoned properties. So, if there's a pocket in this area, it's a pocket of residential in an area of commercial. It's not creating a pocket of commercial in a residential area. On the backside of the residential subdivision in question is commercial property and Route 13, a commercial corridor. On the west side is North State Street, which is also loaded with commercial property. So, it's just unfortunately wrong, as a matter of fact, to suggest that approval of this application would result in a new pocket of commercial property. Secondly, the planning commission, and I say this respectfully, got it wrong as a matter of law. And I will cite you to a case that's been recognized as the standard on this question in the state of Delaware since 1971. It's a case called Mobile Oil Corporation versus the Board of Adjustment of the Town of Newport, Delaware. And that case can be found at 283 Atlantic, second, page 837. And what that case stands for is the proposition that the prospect of competition between an existing use in one part of a municipality with a potential use in another part of a municipality has never been recognized as a valid basis for any land use decision. You just don't make decisions based on how it's going to affect competition among private property owners. You can't pick and choose who wins and who loses. And that makes common sense, that the zoning laws have to be applied uniformly, and you have to give everyone an equal opportunity to make the highest and best use of their property. So, respectfully, I would say the planning commission simply got it wrong on the law, and they got it wrong on the facts. This application is consistent with the existing commercial character of the area, and the staff got that right. Their recommendation is correct on the facts and on the law. At the planning commission hearing, there was testimony presented by one neighbor who appeared and expressed concern about the view from the residential area. And I think her chief concern was a concern about foot or vehicle traffic trespassing from this property if it were approved and developed for commercial use into the residential area. And I would submit that that is an issue that can be easily addressed at the site plan stage by providing for adequate landscape buffering or a fence, as is typically required between adjoining residential and commercial uses. So, in sum, I would just say that the planning staff got it right, as they almost always do. And the planning commission doesn't make mistakes very often. I respect what they do. Unfortunately, in this case, I think they're just wrong on the facts and on the law. The application is consistent with the character of the area and the goals of the comprehensive plan, and we would therefore ask that you follow your own staff's recommendation and approve the application. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Partee. Any questions on Mr. Partee? Seeing none. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else who would like to speak in favor of the proposed ordinance? Anyone else? Seeing none, is there anyone who would like to speak against the proposed ordinance? Anyone who would like to speak against? Seeing none, declare the public hearing closed. What's the pleasure of council? Now, if you vote against the planning commission, you have to state a reason for your vote. Mr. Persson.
Application would be to adopt ordinance 2015-01.
I speak, officer.
The application would be to adopt ordinance 2015-01, as approved by the city planning office.
That is your...
The original.
What's the lawyer say?
Pleasure is on the amendment number one.
Okay, amendment first.
The first thing we have to vote on.
All right. Then, application is to approve amendment number one.
That is your motion.
I'll second the motion.
Seconded by Mr. Slavin. Any questions? Any questions on the motion?
I have a question.
Mr. Slaven, then, Mr. Anderson.
Is a sufficient reason for voting to accept the recommendations of the planning staff? If that's given as a reason, was that sufficient to meet the intent of the law?
That would be for B, that would be correct.
Mr. Anderson.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President. I am vetting against the planning commission amendment, and I would encourage everyone else to do so as well, because, well, all of us drive by the area, and we know that it really is a commercial area, and it should be a commercial area. It's consistent with the character of North State Street. And I honestly think the planning commission made a mistake, and I don't see that there's any competition. There's, that we have a whole city of commercial properties, and we're trying to develop the whole city, not just one area. So I think Mr. Pardee was right, they were wrong, they made a mistake.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Purza.
Can I ask a question? When we do six A, I'm getting lost between the outline and what's in the report. There's an A and a B in the report. Are we doing, is six A really six AA and six AB? Are we voting twice?
No, it's one ordinance that includes a part A and a part B, so it is just simply one.
So the approved ordinance 2015-01, as adopted and previously approved by the city planning office, adopts both A and B, which in the sub-report?
Yes.
Which reverses the planning commission?
Yes.
Okay, so voting yes will verify that we are reversing the planning commission?
Well, right now, the motion that you have on the floor is to affirm the amendment. So I think first you need to vote on the amendment offered by the planning commission, and then you would vote on the ordinance.
It's a point of information.
Go ahead, sir.
So now, it's a point of information, voting no on the amendment will allow us to vote yes on the councilman's underlying motion. So we have to dispense with the amendment first.
What I would like to see is, yeah, what's the roadmap we've got to get to to adopt this thing? That's where I want to go.
If you want to adopt it as originally proposed, you would have to first defeat the amendment.
Okay.
And then you would make a motion.
Then we have to vote, so we...
An adoption recommendation of the planning staff.
That's the first one would be...
Or as initially proposed.
First one is to vote against the recommendation of the planning commission, correct me if you stand.
Yes.
And then we vote on the rezoning.
Yes, or not the rezoning, the comprehensive plan amendment. Then, under number seven, we will set dates for the rezoning.
All right, that's fine.
So to clarify, is the application then to reject the amendment number one?
To get to your...
All right.
Your position, yes.
Got it?
Yes.
It's easy, isn't it? Clear as mud.
Do we have to explain why the first time through, or is that the second time through?
I would do it the first time through.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call the...
Mr. Anderson.
No, because the staff was right, and as the testimony we heard, they're wrong on the law.
The motion is to reject the planning commission amendment.
No, the motion was to approve it.
Approve it.
That's why I'm voting no.
Because we've been trained not to make negative motions.
Exactly. It gets too confusing if it's not confusing enough.
So what does a yes vote do?
A yes vote affirms the amendment.
The amendment? Okay, so we don't want to do that?
Voting no.
Okay.
At least they get what you want with voting no.
Mr. Dixon?
No.
Can you state your reason?
Because he feels like saying no. Because the amendment is wrong, and we're trying to straighten the amendment out. And the only way to do it is say no.
Mr. Purza?
I would vote no, for the reasons that I believe that the neighborhood, as described in the application, is consistent with commercial use in the area. The eventual adoption of the ordinance will allow the applicant to use the property in a manner that's consistent and complementary to the surrounding neighborhoods. There is no substantial basis on the record for any objections made by the community to reject it. And the preference would be is that the basis for denial, simply on promoting one area of the city over another, isn't the best public policy, provided the applicant satisfies the elements needed to gain the approval of the application that they've submitted. And if the planning commission is satisfied that the application has been submitted, I feel that the applicant has the right to proceed, and we should reject the planning recommendation on those grounds.
Thank you, Mr. Purza.
Mr. Slaven?
Can you repeat that? I vote no, because I believe the amendment is flawed.
No, and I do so because I think that it is consistent with the neighborhood, supported by staff, and it conforms to the comprehensive plan.
Mr. Brownard?
I vote no, based on staff's recommendation, because I believe that it is in the best interest of the community to conform with the surrounding commercial establishments in the region. I think that's believable.
Final vote is six against. The motion fails. Or the motion passed, this fails. All right, now, what's the pleasure of council for the regard to proposed ordinance 2015-1, as amended?
As non-amended?
Not as amended.
Not amended, I'm sorry, not amended. Go ahead, Mr. Purza.
Can we make an application to approve ordinance 2015-01, as originally submitted by the applicant, and as approved by the city planning department?
Questions on the motion?
Second.
Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call the...
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Purza?
Yes.
Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Mr. Hutcherson?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Brownard?
Yes, motion carries six to zero. Item number seven, proposed ordinance 2015-02, the rezoning request for property located at 801 North State Street, owned by 801 Gold Coast LLC, LD Schenk III. Property is currently zoned RG3 group housing, and the proposed zoning is C2A, limited central commercial zone. The first reading of the proposed ordinance was accomplished during the council meeting February 9, 2015. On February 17, the planning commission deferred the public hearing and action on this item pending city council decision on the ordinance 2015-01. Ms. Stouts?
Thank you. Based on the action taken on item six, staff would recommend that you set a public hearing before the planning commission on May 18, 2015, and public hearing before the city council, and final reading on June 8, 2015.
Thank you. Any questions of staff? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call the...
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Purza?
Yes.
Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Mr. Hutcherson?
Yes.
Mr. Brownard?
Yes, carries unanimously. Last item on the agenda is council members' announcements. Any council member have an announcement this evening? Mr. Hutcherson.
Yes, the League of Women Voters of Kent County will be hosting a candidate's night on Wednesday, April 15, 2015, at the Modern Maturity Center, 1121 Forest Avenue, from 7:30 to 9:30. This will be a great opportunity to learn about the candidates in the City of Dover April 21 election, which is only eight days away.
Thank you, councilman. Any other council members have an announcement? Mr. Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, it's struck me sometimes as fascinating when you go over to a third world country that just recently gets to vote, and you see people standing in line, literally getting shot at or explosions around, and sometimes we forget to vote ourselves. And I would like to urge my fellow citizens to vote soon. The City of Dover municipal election will be held on Tuesday, April 21, 2015, between the hours of 7:00 a.m. and 8:00 p.m. The polling place for all these voting districts is the Alps Lodge 1903, which is at 200 Salisbury Road, Dover, Delaware, 19904. For information about the candidates, absentee voting, and the election, please visit www.cityofdover.com and click on the Election 2015 button. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Armstrong. Any other members of council have anything to say? I would close this evening by echoing Mr. Hutcherson and Mr. Anderson. The vote for the council and the mayor coming up eight days from now. The people that are in the audience obviously have taken an interest to show up, and that's deeply appreciative. It doesn't make any difference who you are in this city, as long as you are registered to vote, you have the right to vote in this city, and I think you should exercise that right. Some people believe in public service for a variety of reasons, but I don't think there's an individual sitting on this floor that does it for personal gain. It's, you're not here for that. You do what you think is right for the city, and you try to do the best that you can. Sometimes you do a good job, sometimes you do a bad job, but that's why we have elections. One last thing I would like to remind you of, that Cow Pine is continuing to make significant progress with respect to the various startup activities that are association with, that are associated with the construction of the Garrison Energy Center out on White Oak Road. They notified me today that they are planning to tentatively initiate the preliminary gas turbine combustion process in about a week to 10 days. They will be starting the process of producing steam about a week after that. There'll be a lot of equipment testing and startup activities that are going to continue for the next couple of months, so that the facility will be ready to generate reliable, efficient, and environmentally responsible power by its due date this summer. This is now on the cusp of being a true energy, or a true revenue producer for the City of Dover. I personally am very happy that our economic development department and our city staff was able to get this taken care of. It's quite a feather in our cap. That and the Uzunuts facility that's going to open this summer out at the Garrison Technical Park are going to be revenue drivers for this city for years to come, and I'm very confident there'll be a lot more coming down the pipe. Those of you who do get City of Dover water service, because of the increase in water usage out in that section of the city, will see temporary groundwater issues again. It will flush itself out over the prolonged period of time, so I urge you to be patient. If you have issues with damage to property, you can always bring it to the city manager, and I'm sure he'll be happy to take a good, close look at it. With that, if there are no other comments, I will take motion to adjourn. All okay or signify by saying no. Or adjourn.